This is random and this might be going too far into this, but is that where you're gonna determine like? You had mentioned Minerva Lake Road is a five-foot concrete sidewalk.
Yeah.
What is it in the new section?
Uh...
Is it three or four?
I can't remember if they're four feet or five feet, but that's more. The stand, like the, the prevailing standard now is to typically have five feet wide sidewalks.
So would you determine then, like, I mean, to me, five foot down Minerva Lake Road makes sense just because it's, it's the main area. Um, you know, but in some of the smaller areas, but you would determine what to put in, or would you just stick with five foot for the rest of the village?
Well, what we would just probably, and we would probably just keep it at a higher level and say, hey, we recommend like a concrete sidewalk.
Okay.
In this area, or we recommend like they share use path in this area, or something like that. And then we'll give you a detailed design, then you can look at it and say, okay, well realistically, an eight-foot wide path doesn't fit here.
Okay.
But more just establishing corridors.
Okay. Cause like around the lake, we would probably do more of a walk, uh, a walking path versus sidewalks, but then...
Like, like... Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and but, but you could also, I mean, a master plan isn't necessarily a commitment.
Right, it's just...
It's just an intent.
Right.
And so you could easily say like, hey, in this area, we're thinking, like, we would like it to be this type of path.
Okay.
And then down in this area, we are cool with sidewalks or something.
Okay.
So you could, you could identify your intent.
I think it's great because I, I just like the idea of like coming into this role as like, oh wait, somebody already thought about this and here's what they thought we should do in the future. So here's something that they've already put together, a scaffolding that you could work with. That's, that's a lot of what I think that we do, and you guys have done in previous, is like, hey, how do we make this better for the future?
I feel like this is actually realistic at this point.
Yeah.
I feel like it's actually something that is going to happen.
It's something together.
Yeah, I feel like this is something that is going to happen, whether it's this year, next year, or within three years. I don't feel like this is twenty years down the road.
And this is a, to me, this is a relatively minor investment to help you maximize your future investments and your future grant pursuits.
Yeah. I just feel like with the Linkus stuff and all that stuff, it might actually come a lot faster than you think.
Think, can we use the Linkus to see if we could help us fund the Jordan Road for a better reason?
I think that's gonna be a dumb question. Yeah, I mean, I don't think that we have any reason not to ask.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All they say is no, and if we ever not take your bridge.
Yeah. I think that's the intent is to fund projects like that, but, you know, it's a lot of PowerPoint presentations.
Oh yeah.
Now we're, now money's coming into play.
If that were to go through, like, there's a point where we can't do that without some help.
So task order number thirty-seven is the Minerva Lake Road master plan. So similar to the pedestrian path master plan, this is a master plan for Minerva Lake Road. So it's a master plan for roadway drainage and best drainage improvements from Cleveland Avenue to Farview Road. Overall objective is to allow the village to develop, it's gonna say the same thing, right? Kind of develop a planning schedule, have a document so that you can start pursuing the outside grants. Uh, the budget status is forty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Similarly, this is a very new task order, so we haven't spent anything. Uh, and then different group of staff, but a similar group anticipating a start date of late June two thousand twenty-five. And hoping to complete this in fall of two thousand twenty-five. So the background for this project is really, um, the conversation, the, the resident open house in October, I think, to discuss the Minerva Lake Road improvement project. And some of the, that and some of the engineering challenges we had with figuring out how to put a path along Minerva Lake Road. I will say that Farview Road to State Route Three is probably the easiest part of the Minerva Lake Road that you will encounter. It's gonna be the cheapest, it's gonna be the least pain, it's gonna be the least challenging. So I'm glad that we're starting with that one. But one of the things that was brought up by council members and administration after that meeting was, man, it would be really nice if we kind of had a master plan so that we can say, hey residents, here's what we're thinking. And at some point, we may be coming to you and saying, um, Minerva Lake Road is maybe slightly being realigned. Like maybe it's shifting a little more, or shifting a little south. And here's why, and here's how it would affect your property. So that it wouldn't just be like, you know, hey, uh, we're doing a project in your, in front of your house, you know, in five months. But then the other reason for doing the master plan is because Minerva Lake Road is a pretty long road. And any changes you make have to be coordinated with the other parts that are already there. So if we, if we do end up getting into something like some form, I'm not talking like massive realignment, it's like we're gonna, you know, cut across on a straight line or something, but more just like has to shift five feet into somebody who are still within their right of way, but here's how it works, whatever. Right, so this master plan will lay that out. So that again, it's not commitment, but it's an intent.
And then also having a plan will help with OPWC grants as well. And also understanding the need in the future for...
Well, that, probably the biggest benefit that this has outside of resident expectation is budget. So that you can look at and say, here are the six pieces of Minerva Lake Road. You know, like, we may have, like, here's, here's all the stuff we have to do to Minerva Lake Road. How many phases do we have? How long? Cause like I said, if, if, if this project is about one point three million dollars, you know, I hesitate to think what the far western portion of Minerva Lake Road costs.
So are we talking storm sewers or anything that, uh, we don't have any of that along our life?
Nothing of the nuts.
Bits and pieces.
So we're, we're planning this as if we would have to add it. But when you get into detailed design, if you find out you don't want to, or there's a different way to manage it, like maybe you just do curb and gutter and kind of like run long runs to, and have minimums, that's a detailed design thing, but we're basing it on, we're basing it on matching what we're doing from Farview down, which matches what's been done in the golf course development, which matches what's been done on Farview out towards State Route one sixty-one. So it's just, it's basically modernizing the roadway system and hopefully making pedestrian improvements.
Uh, is Minerva Lake Road the next worst roads in our village?
No, actually, um, Minerva Lake Road overall has a, I think it's classic, I think its score is fair. But its scores are below fifties, so it's not classified as poor or very poor, it's fair. The worst, the worst road that's left, and I can jump to it, you know, if you guys are good with this master plan. If you guys want me to keep going.
No, we're good.
So, um, this looks like I made a, yeah, I, I wrote continued in the wrong slide. So pretend that really just says potential task orders. Minerva Lake Road North Bay Awards to East Shore. Shouldn't say East Shore Drive, I apologize. So, uh, that, what, that's the project that you were talking about earlier, Councilman tomorrow, where it's like, basically this stretch right in front of the municipal building with potential improvements to like improve the flow between the lakes. So what would, what, and what I'm tentatively anticipating was is that that would be a complete reconstruction. It has a score, a PCA score fifty-seven out of one hundred, so it's classified as fair. It would include storm sewer improvements, so at a minimum, it would improve the connection between the lakes. A lot of you may not be aware, but in two thousand seventeen, I think it is, we did a hydraulic study to study the, there's an existing, I think it's a forty-eight inch diameter culvert under Minerva Lake Road between the two lakes. And that's how the north lake is connected to the south lake. And it's that connection, by the way, that makes the, makes basically as far as our record of engineers is concerned, is one body of water. Which is why we have to permit to do anything up there, because it's connected to the south portion. But, um, it was sort of, we, we, we said in that report that, that the culvert does an okay job, but it could be improved. Um, and we think that there's probably some water quality benefit to having a more open flow area between the two lakes. The, the, the lake depth is generally governed by the, the number of boards in the, in the dam. Uh, but if there is just like a little bit more flow between them, you, you, you make sure you don't choke anything as it's coming from the north. Um, so with the road, the intent of that project would include the, or improve the connection between the lakes. That memo had a number of options, multiple barrels, uh, box culverts, a con span structure, which is, this is like the structure that has the, the walking trail that goes under Quiet Brook Vale. It's called a con span structure, uh, we, we looked at one of those too. Um, and then just noted that this project, we're not preparing a scope with fear or anything, we're just saying it's, it's kind of on the horizon maybe, or at least it's, it's out there. It would be coordinated in conjunction with the roadway master plan and any, any potential dredging project. So what I mean by those two things is, you know, we want to make sure that when we do the roadway master, the Minerva Lake Road master plan, that if we jumped to this one before we did anything else, that'd be detrimental to any of the other projects that we are contemplating. My initial gut is no, because Minerva Lake Road has a high point at Farview. So everything drains from Farview east drains towards State Route Three. Typically, generally, everything from Farview drains toward the lake, to the west. Everything from about north bay-ish drains kind of to the east, and then west of north bay is more plateauish, but... So what I'm saying is, we're, we're kind of at a low spot, so it's probably not detrimental if we needed to leak from to this spot first. It also has some potential benefits to a dredging project because if you did this project before you did a dredging project, then you do, you may alleviate the choke point during maintenance, like during construction. Now, they're not trying to route an entire storm through a four-foot pipe like happens now. Maybe they have a bigger opening that they could send water, so maybe, maybe it makes their drainage maintenance a little friendier. So that's why we would coordinate those with those two projects. In a perfect world, if you guys had unlimited money, I would drive both lakes at the same time and tear that road up at the same time. Because now you could create an opening between the two lakes and let equipment go back and forth, but...
Can we have unlimited money?
Obviously we don't have it.
Can we please have unlimited money?
Yeah.
May we have unlimited money?
I have multiple sources that can be used for Minerva Lake Road. There's multiple sources of limited money. Sounds like money.
Isn't like now what I asked for?
We still want, uh, the combination of grants and loans from open gas.
You want to sell like kitty and something?
I don't know.
We would all have to sell it.
Yeah, you know.
Do we, how many do we have? Two?
Yeah.
We need to sell it, but I don't know.
So then the other potential...
It's nine o'clock.
The other potential is, uh, project to revalue. And so Valley Road is the worst scoring road in the village, it's currently at a score of twenty-two. The worst part, the worst scoring road in the village used to be the stretch of Maplewood Drive from Cleveland Avenue to Lakewood. Congratulations, that's now probably the best, I would say, probably as a one hundred now. So, uh, Valley Road, come on down. That would, what, what we would recommend, like, and, and Jeff and I have had conversations about this, the biggest challenge of this project is timing. What really should happen to this project is it should be a complete reconstruction of Valley Road. The road just has to be completely torn down and built back up. It's the link to the swimming pool, so you would want to include pedestrian improvements at some time, a sidewalk on one side of the road at a minimum. Uh, we've been contemplating the east side of the road, seems like the best location for that. The waterline there, um, there's no documentation in the waterline improvements project that we discussed earlier, that the waterline to the swimming pool was improved. We know that the waterline along Minerva Lake Road was improved, but there's, there's no real indication that the waterline running to the pool was improved. Some weird annotations in the drawings that the valve got moved or something, but, but also I think one of the preliminary comments from, I think MKSK noted that the waterline might have to be upgraded anyway. So if you're going to have to do a waterline improvement, you want to do it with a lot of pavement, so that would be the time to do it. So you would want to do a waterline improvement there. And then there is a storm sewer that goes under that road that's, it's been a priority one for a while. And it has a condition grade D. Um, it's a corrugated metal pipe and it's just kind of rotting away. So we, we talked about rolling it into a sewer project before, but then we said, then we talked and said, well, we might actually have this roadway replacement project, so that would be the better time to do it, be the most efficient money. I would say these two projects that are on here, Valley Road is most likely to happen relatively quickly, but again, it's, it's, it's a, it's a schedule thing. And trying to mesh it with the pool and shut down to the pool, and realistically, the best time to do this project would be this fall. It's, it's, it's June third that we haven't started designing. So realistically, I can't get this project out in time to do it, like, it's just not easy. So what we started to do is to see how early the batch plans open. You know, good weather, they open a little earlier, but a lot of times the batch plans aren't opening until maybe, the asphalt batch plans aren't opening until at best maybe late March, a lot of times not until maybe early April. So, you know, I mean, if you time it right, and, and you get all, like, if you time it right and the contracts aren't so early enough that they're to the point where they can start paving no later than like say, I mean realistically, no later than like May fourteenth, because it's a short paving project, but like, let's just give ourselves a little bit of slough and say, May first, and maybe they can get the road put down in time to open up a pool around, you know, for, for a memorial day opening, which I think is when you typically open. I, I, and, and we need to talk to our design team scout quickly, we can put something together. Need to talk to some people in the industry like Strauser Paving, to see like how early a batch plan's been opening in Ohio. I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's a realistic way to do it this year after Labor Day and get it done before the batch plan is closed. In, in the interest of full disclosure, I did talk to legal counsel about this project one time, and we were like, could this be a scope addition to a contract? And I think we, I think both you and Steve felt comfortable saying, this is far enough outside of the scopes of work that we already have that it might not pass the smell test. So it would not be in your best interest, I think, to, and, and unless you guys look at things that change, but it, it, it just wouldn't, it wouldn't be like in your best interest. So we want to make sure, you know, get it full publicly. So I want, just in case someone, I want to put it out there, we, we talked about it, we, we tried to like, I'm not saying we tried to skirt anything, but we tried to be like, well, does this fit this criteria, does this fit this criteria? I, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think Jesse's...
Even failing, it doesn't fit.
Yeah, I don't think Jesse's company felt comfortable saying that. And my, my Google JD, not quite as good as the Capitol JD, so...
That's right.
Well, we've had a couple waterline breaks there, and we've had some, we've definitely had some issues in that area as well, so it is something that needs done.
Are we gonna tear Valley Road? By putting a... They decided to go before we fix the pool, are we gonna tear Valley Road?
That's true, that's true. That's what he said. He said, like, you need to upgrade the waterline to the pool.
Can I tell you, talk about we're doing it at the same time, but again, it's like, we can't wait till we do it at the same time? And that's always a question.
I think that's, um...
It's something I know. But then to put a road on top of it, it must have broke chicken thing. Anyways.
Realistically, um...
How much can you only do it for?
Yeah, I mean, here's the thing, like, I, I don't think, I don't think the pool construction traffic will be so significant that you destroy the... I mean, think about, think about all the construction traffic that came in to do all of the prep work for the MI development. Then think of all the construction that involved it. I think it's fair to say Minerva Lake Road from Farview down held up reasonably well over basically seven years of non-stop construction.
Okay, fine, good point. This is a good thing to be...
An alternative is if we do a roadway project, you could basically just more or less treat the surface course as sacrificial. Like, hey, you know what?
Don't, we're done.
We'll, we'll build this road correctly, but we'll just mentally plan on maybe doing a mill and fill project at the end, or maybe you, maybe you just mill off like a, like a notch, like a, you know, normally you do like say two inches, two and a half inches. Maybe you only have to do like the top inch and just put a fresh coat on top of it. But the subbase would still be good. The trick is just making sure that, you know, we have, obviously if you're going to do pool improvements, you need to have a way for them to get back there. So it's not really feasible to do both at the same time.
How far from Jordan Road you got?
All right, uh, and then this, this, this one we talked about earlier, council, this is just, uh, we don't need to go, I don't think we need to go into any, any detail here, but, um, we talked about that. And then this is another item that I was asked to look at, this is the shared use path under Quiet Brook Vale. So remember I was talking about, like, this is basically a con span structure, so you have something similar, like that's an option under Minerva Lake Road. Uh, but you can see there's the pedestrian path, and you can see there's some erosion along the edge. It's kind of cutting under some of the, these aren't necessarily the best pictures, but if you want, if you want to, uh, walk over there yourself, you can see, so, um, I just put it on the slide as something that we were asked to just, hey, could you just go take a look at it? And, uh, Jeff and I had talked about, you know, this is actually done by another engineering firm, this is done, you know, by the engineering firm that did the design work for the MI homes development. So I don't know if, um, I would, I guess I would recommend you consult with your legal counsel to determine if there's any, any recourse or anything you would have to maybe ask them to take a look at it. You can always ask, but, um, you know, I, it'd be some weird thing, like they were contracting it at MI homes, so you probably have to go through MI homes. So, but I mean, if, if it's something you want to ask them to look at, uh, you could either reach out to them, I provided comment tack names to, to Jeff, for the people who were project managers for that, uh, design professional at the time. But I, I guess I would encourage you to talk to legal counsel if there are any avenues you want to pursue. Jesse and his guys will keep you straight. But could, we also, I mean, we can, we've got people to take a look at it for you, but this one we put on the slide as a potential task order, but we're not committing any resources to the end or anything like that. I'm not, I'm not even gonna scope with fear because I don't think it's a, go back to the word, I don't think it's emergent. It's, it's...
Would there be any benefit?
There are plenty of worse eroded things throughout central Ohio that see more roadway traffic than sees spill traffic.
So this isn't as bad as obviously the dam area, but would there be any benefit to looking at both at the same time?
I mean, you could do it if like it's the same funding and stuff.
Okay.
Um, if you wanted to lump it into like, I, I guess the only way I was... One way I recommend against it is if you needed to fund it through two separate sources.
Okay.
Right, so like, if you wanted to have like separate task orders or separate, you know, because one's funded by one revenue source and one's funded by another. I mean, you can combine them, but sometimes it'd be like that with Jeff by separating things and making billing and invoicing easier. I, 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 I'm, I wouldn't let this go very long.
Okay.
But, I mean, it, it definitely need, in my opinion, it should be addressed as it's, in my opinion, it is not as pressing as the previous slide.
Really, this, so I'm kind, I'm wondering if you would draw a similar conclusion as to what you shared about maybe getting with legal counsel for the, the dam and the erosion from this, the spillway, I guess. Is there, is that a similar possible avenue that, hey, the dam construction didn't take into account this land and the, the guiding of the water, and it's causing an erosion because of defective engineering concept? I don't know, I don't...
Well, I would...
I don't know either.
Yeah, and I guess...
Good question.
And, and I'm not...
Put back.
And, and, and I'm just, I guess I would, I'm not saying when we're, yeah, we're, we're talking once, friends, but
Yeah, sure.
I wouldn't classify anything here as defective.
Sure.
Um, I guess, didn't want to step on your toes, but it's kind of trending, but, um, I would also, you know, the, the dam and the, the dam and the golf course development were designed by the same design professional. One, what, so the, the dam rehabilitation wasn't, it was done in advance of this stuff, so... I mean, in, in best case scenario, they would have been able to coordinate everything. Uh, but sometimes you're deciding for something that's there, and then something changes after the fact. And again, we don't know if this is, like, we don't know what this, what's necessarily causing the erosion is water from the spillway. I don't know, I mean, I think that'd be kind of interesting, because the dam didn't change. Like, the dam today is basically the dam that was there before. They didn't, they didn't really change any design criteria, didn't change any concept, they just had to completely rebuild the dam. Because over a hundred years, the village let trees grow on an earth of dam, and you can't do that. And so the only way to take care of that is to completely tear out the dam and rebuild it. So they didn't really change the function of the dam, the capacity of the dam, they reused the existing spillway. So I mean, basically what's there today is what was there before they got there, generally. I mean, it just could be, you know, I, I mean, I, I think the energy dissipators are an improvement. But I mean, you can see, like, you can kind of see the top, the top, like, and you can't see them. If you look at the, the bottom, bottom left of the leftmost picture, that's the top of the spillway, and you can see, I mean, it's the existing concrete. So they didn't change the spillway or anything. I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, I guess if you wanted legal counsel to kind of just look at options, uh, then I'm sure...
It probably has to look more than that, instead of looking.
Yeah, I, I was just thinking. Yeah, no, I can't, I can't do this all, because it's the same, same area, same design professional, same kind of logic, yeah, exactly.
Thanks for answering my question.
Yeah, no, no problem, I mean, you want to do, like, you want to make sure you approached it from the angles that, you want to, it's kind of just due diligence, right? You want to make sure you perform your due diligence before you commit to a direction.
Fair enough.
Were we breaking for lunch, or? No, I'm sorry.
I was thinking it was that time.
I'm fourteen, I don't miss the discuss.
All right, general discussion summary. Well, we haven't even started our meeting yet, I think that's the funny part, and Jesse guys, and I have stuff, so, sorry, guys. Um, this was just the, I told, that's...
Intro.
That was the intro. Um, does anybody have anything that they want to talk about before we let Mike go and all of that? And we can kind of let, I'm sure Jesse's ready to go home too, and these guys are ready to go. So you guys are all more than welcome to go.
Yeah.
Um, you have a folder for me though, for tomorrow to take?
Sorry.
You have a folder for me to take?
I will.
Do you just want to leave it on my desk? Do that, and I'll take it first thing, or I'll, yes, I will be here. Uh, that way, Mike, you, you guys are, yeah, he's up, he's like, I'm done.
Sometimes you have to be told twice.
Sometimes it's don't have to be told twice, so if you need anything, just let me know. The, um, does anybody have anything that they want to talk about for the, the last?
I think we've figured two and a half hours.
I do.
Did we figure this out? If, of, hey, we have a lot of stuff, and this is probably the order that we should go in, I mean, it's, now we just need unlimited funds.
Yeah. So I think the first thing is...
Somebody cut down a tree, sorry.
Oh yeah, that must have been one of those on top there.
What happened to me?
Yeah.
Oh dang it, we should have gotten this to reserve.
I told you, we should have got the Jimmy's. I'm playing with Kathy on that one. I'm, I'm just kidding, okay, so...
Do you know what, have any other questions or?
For these guys, I don't.
I think we're good.
Okay, guys.
Do you guys have any questions before these guys all leave?
No.
No.
Back to, it's a good time again.
Third time's sweet.
I thought we were going to be able to ask...
I, I, no, I, um, no, this is work session, I said next week we wouldn't have that.
You told David.
I told David that... I told David that he, I made sure I asked him, okay, I actually asked him a question because I told him I would ask a question for him. And I did ask his question, like. So this is a work session. We've already been here two and, two and a half hours.
It's just, you guys have to respect our time too. Like, we're tired, it's Thursday, we had a long week. Like, we're not ready to talk about anything yet because we have to digest this information too.
No, they're here because they don't like the maintenance.
Well, I think, but like, this.
And it's, you guys already approved, I explained, the maintenance garage was approved. It is moving forward. Um, he had asked a question about location of the drive, if there was a chance. The plans have already been approved and this is not going to be a back and forth now. Next Thursday, we have a meeting. And you guys are more than welcome to come to, to the citizen comments. And I did explain that. I said, you know, there may be a chance that at the end, but we're almost two and a half hours and we haven't even started our meeting yet.
That's why we came tonight, you, we were told.
I did not say that. I specifically said that I would be more than happy to ask this question.
She said after the meeting. Oh, after the meeting.
But again, you, you, if, if anybody wants to stay around, but, I mean, at this point, they, they're all leaving. So.
Sorry, I misunderstood.
No, that's fine. I just, I'm, I just want to make it clear because, again, this is just something that, it, it, yeah, it's, the plans have already been approved for the maintenance garage. It is moving forward, so, you know, talking about certain things, I don't know it's going to change too much at this point.
Like, it was approved like two years ago.
So, okay.
Yeah, we have our, our survey.
But.
Okay, so, um, uh, uh, I saw that, I don't know what I was talking about that first, but I think there was some, we just had us update.
Yes, we have the three bits, so Jeff, the tree survey or the survey? Okay, you talk about your survey.
I can't hear what they're talking, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I can't hear what they're talking.
Okay, the resident survey is moving forward. Eric is putting together basically the questions that we've all agreed on. He's laying it out for us. He hasn't been able to prioritize it the way that he wanted to. And so we're sure we'll have it by next week to review as the, as the little committee first. And then hopefully get it to you. Also, let me just say real quickly, we met with Jesse before the meeting tonight, so some of us have been here three and a half hours. And, um, and Jesse made it very clear that absolutely, there can be absolutely no relationship between whoever sends the survey out and gets the responses back and council, administration, anything. So we will be going with who Eric recommended, Pete DeSalvo, I believe is his name. And, um, you know, and, and so we'll start working with him as soon as possible and get it going. So, yeah, it's, it's happening.
Yeah.
Good, glad to hear that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, so no, that was, it was great, Jesse, and I, I think Jesse pretty much answered everything the way that we were expecting him to, to answer. As, as far as that goes, so.
Yeah, it, it's just good to know. And thank God someone in that meeting said, hey, you about FOIA.
Leah's the one that always says, but we have to make sure of this.
Yeah, yeah, and thank God she did. Because now we can do it, we've got it set up. It'll just be a process and system that's in place for the future as well. So, yeah, excited.
We met last week. Did you go over that?
Do you want to?
So we met last week, we went over the questions again. So myself, Leah, because Leah is HR. Um, so Leah, myself, we all kind of went through the questions one more time and loved some of them. Was concerned about a couple of them because there was like, are you male or female or whatever? And obviously we have two female, like, once we started getting to the police department, it was one of those things that I was just like, I feel like it's going to be better if we don't ask about this.
Now you're talking about.
Yes, the intern. So we went over those, we did all of that, um.
Yeah, I think if you, you have to eliminate the question that,
Are, are definitely, yes. I want, because we want them to do it. I mean, at the end of the day, if you don't have results, then you.
I think the other, the other thing, and I'm sure someone told you this, but I was trying to say about, I can't remember. Um, this is the exit survey or is this the internal, like, at like, or?
So I was talking resident, but we did get together and meet on the two internal surveys.
Which one are we going to talk about now?
We had met last week just about the exit and the intern.
With the exits or the, we're going to collect data, but we're not going to see it for a while.
Correct.
Because when you, when one person exits, you can't expect to read that information.
No, because we'll never know, we're too small.
So, so we're, this is where it's going to be collected and, and maybe two years down the road, we might be able to see some of this.
You know what? If we never have to see it and we never have turnover, we would be happy.
Absolutely.
So, I agree with it.
So, but I believe what we're trying to do is go back like a year, and I think we've lost four officers in the last year. You know, if we can't even get two of them to respond, then we can at least see what they have to say.
And if we ever lose, lose anybody upstairs, I mean, we will do the same thing. So, you know, I can honestly, I can at least say, we've, we've been very fortunate. I, you know, we, Barb has been unbelievably amazing, but the two before that was not so much. So, um, yeah, we've been very fortunate.
And then I think the other piece of business that we said we were going to talk about tonight are committee assemblies.
Yes.
If we're going to change them all, so.
That's all you guys, that is not. So right now, the way that we have it, and Tony, I don't know if you're a hundred percent familiar, but we do it as a group. So we do things different than we used to. We used to have three people, we used to have six meetings every three months and it was a lot. And it could be on a Tuesday, a Monday, it could be during the day, whatever. We quit doing that, we started coming in thirty minutes before, if we needed to, you know, sometimes we could come in at six. So if there is something urgent that you feel like we need to, hey, whoever can come in at six, we're going to start the work session at six. But we typically start it at six thirty, we do three and three. Each person is the lead of one, there's technically a committee, but you report on just that one. Um, so you're in charge of that one, but it's done as a committee as a whole. So it's, so that's what we're talking about, is the lead person, as of right now, you are legislation. Congratulations. But, I mean, I don't know if somebody wants to change that, if any, so let's.
I think I've talked, we talked about, you know, kind of the work cohesion, and I was thinking of allowing him to take finance because he has finance as well, and I can take legislation. Um, and I'm still wanting to work, you know, help with stuff or whatever we want to do to make that happen. But I mean, that works for me, I don't mind that.
I'm open to whatever, that's where the group wants to do.
Let Stacy go first.
No, Stacy has to stay on streets.
She, she said from day one, she was not doing fine.
I don't believe in budgets.
No budgets, no math, okay.
Just to kind of ask a question though. So finance, I'm going to probably understand, but legislation, what was that role? I mean, I get, we're reading the material.
I mean, I'll, I'll tell you, I think what the role is supposed to mean.
There you go, do that.
Is that you're writing legislation, you are the person that really kind of puts it together. It's not what's happened. Our administration has been writing their legislation for us. But that's not what the regis, the chair or the committee was supposed to say.
So then I'll ask the finance side then too, because then, you know, reading our material, understanding each other might not be a problem. But what, I guess, what are those jobs entitled, or what are they entitled to do? Because you made legislation, that's a good point, right? Um, finance, I mean, what are we doing past Jeff and those guys?
You work a lot with Jeff, I would say that, it's.
Yeah, you basically lay us on to explain to, you know, the council as well as the residents.
But you're not producing anything.
No, it's, I mean, you can choose to produce documents like.
I think there's a,
And I didn't mean, I didn't mean.
No, no, no.
Because I, I left us, I left us hanging last board meeting, and I apologize for that. Because part of it was just, you know, trying to know where I fit, if that makes sense, yeah. I would never do that.
I, I don't, oh, sorry. Yeah.
I'm going to do my best when I walk out there. And I'm not talking, but.
Are they still there?
Yeah.
If you get a complaint because someone is root, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Oh, I'm out there with you.
Can you do it?
Yeah, or, or you can just be.
I mean, it's like, I don't think I'm going to be.
No, no, no. You just, it's nine thirty.
Yeah.
I think he has neurological issues and I have.
I've never seen a job description.
I just don't feel like.
I feel like that's what you're asking, so.
Yeah, I, I don't mind going out.
And also there is this, like, last week I was at the city, I do the Eagle two minutes in a row because my blood pressure got low. So I'm really happy to be around right now. That's why I.
No, okay, so no, Tony, I mean, I, I.
Is that being taken care of? You've got to be, you've been taken care of.
The mayor's getting an officer.
Yep, um, so job descriptions, uh, Kathy mentioned that.
They technically are all on the website.
Okay.
However, I think that, well,
Chase is a guy.
Just a little high level.
Um, because we are elected officials by the people of this village to make sure that, um, we're typically our own citizens. And, um, sometimes we have to ask questions of people that are not part of a village that would have a job. And, um.
And I have no issues with that, so.
And so sometimes you have to peel that. And, and they, I mean, I just get into the weeds to understand the.
Yep.
I think sometimes stuff is such a.
Cool, I will search out on the website, try to get an understanding, finance, I'll help with finance, anything else.
And you can help with all of them. I mean, that's the, the way that you do this now. So if you have something that residents have come to you and they're concerned about some sort of safety something or this or that, you can bring it to the lead or you, you don't have, and I, that's what I do like about the way that you guys are doing this now, is I feel like it's three people were kind of like putting it all together, and then the other three people are, I don't want to say blindsided, but maybe just left in the dark.
Just not in the middle. And give our committee reports.
But you would summarize it in two minutes compared to two hours.
So I'm, and I definitely want to be involved with the pool, if that's okay, um, because it's in my backyard, right? And, um, but yeah, but, and then again, anything else that I can help with.
And then, can I say this about legislation? And I know everybody wants to go, but the other part about legislation that it used to be was they would be on the up and up of what's coming. So there used to be a list of like, and we have it and we can make sure that whoever's doing it gets it. But like, what year is the new renewal for this particular, um, levy? When does pay, salary and pay ranges need to be done? And I think you even asked this just recently, like, why do we do all the legislation towards the end of the year? But is there some that we could do a little sooner? Maybe, there are some that can't, um, you know, like the, there are some that can't, but there are some that maybe.
There's a lot of stuff on a cycle.
Yes.
And sometimes it comes up, sometimes we get caught off guard. And now we're in the, we have to pass this because there's deadlines involved.
Right.
We shouldn't have to be working that way, we should, we, we have enough history. But what we do as a village to be able to say, oh, budgets are due at this time. Or we have to pass this levy information at this time, or, or salaries have to be determined by this date and time. That way we also have to do things as a emergency.
And we've gotten really good at that, but there are things that can't be. For example, when we get our insurance statement, um, we won't know what the new insurance percentage is and da, da, da. There are certain things that just can't be done until we get it in December. So there are things that we, that are just unavoidable, and you just kind of have to go with the flow. So, um, that was kind of that. The, I just wanted to say that about legislation, like, they're, they, in the past, we used to have people that was, and again, just like the mayor's salary and the council's salary. They knew when they were supposed to do it and things just didn't get overlooked and that, like you said, it's just, call it, you know, a oversight, but there were things that just weren't getting.
So if you're taking over finances, we've got to get council salary back on,
Correct.
into readings.
Because it has to pass before August.
Yes, maybe it does a pass before that deadline and.
Got you, okay.
We have four meetings before, so if we don't start the readings by the end of this month again, if, if you start it over, I don't.
So should we take a look at, Tommy, Kim, Tommy and I just talk separately?
Yeah.
This weekend or something?
So the only thing you cannot do is talk with three council members at the same time.
Yeah, I took sunshine yesterday.
That's it, that's the only thing.
Yesterday, took sunshine yesterday.
Uh, okay, that, so you guys are all good with that? Um, the, I'm not going to go over some of the stuff that I have because there is going to be a lot. Some of it was for safety, some of it was for some of those things. We have two hundred and ten pool memberships as of this morning. Um, we have gone through quite a bit of, um, some of the stuff that the concession stand are ready. We've already placed another order, which is great because we've barely even been opened. Um, this week is going to be a little difficult, I think, for, I don't even think all of the concession people have even gotten one yet because the weather has been so terrible, but just kind of is what it is on that. JP reached out to me a week ago and was concerned about a certain tree. It's a very large tree, it is going to come down. So we had Brad go look at it, but I did not want to just go with Brad's recommendation with all of the concerns that I have had with cutting trees down, I wanted a second opinion. So for the record, I did go and call Russell Trees because I felt like the village is comfortable with them.
Yeah.
They came out today, they looked at it, agreed it needed to come down, they gave me an estimate, it was almost double. Um, so we are going to move forward getting it done. I'm just letting you guys know because I feel like, I'm just trying to cover your guys' blood, but, I mean, this whole tree thing has just been out of control over the last couple of months and then.
This tree is over there on the south side of the dam, as you're walking across the dam, as you're coming around the corner to Maplewood. It is actually split in half and it is swaying so bad that you can hear it creeping, it's going to fall on someone like, okay.
Same video or something.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to share a tree process for all of our stakes.
Thank you. While we're talking about trees, we still have those limbs of the pool that have not come down, those dead limbs of the pool.
I will, I wonder if they have, do they have access to get up there? If they don't, we might just need to call Brad and see if Brad can take something, if he has something that can get him up there. Um, do not let me forget that this week, especially if we're at the pool at the same time. Let me see if there, if we have an option to get, to get up there. I'm assuming we don't, just being honest, unless they're going to jump. Um, but, other than that, we're just going to have to call somebody. They do, I know exactly what you're talking about. Absolutely. Um, we, I have some pictures of a couple of different, I was told five seasons is coming up today.
Correct.
For, in, in general, we control all of that. So I don't know what they're going to get done, so we will analyze it over the next day or two. I am fully aware that this over here still looks horrible. Um, we have told them that they can go ahead and move forward and we, they were supposed to send us an invoice. I don't know if they have, I will follow up with Barb tomorrow and make sure that that is on their list to be, being done. If not, it will be immediately, but they gave us the, I think it was forty-five dollars per day. My understanding is we told them, but that we wanted to move forward, but we did need an invoice because we had to get a PO before we could technically tell them yes. So I don't know if that happened yet. So there has been a little bit of delay with things, with trying to get invoices from them. Um, I'm not.
As long as I can tell people we're moving forward with it.
Yes, yes, so we, yeah, as long as I have PO, we are moving forward. Um, the, huh, what was the other thing?
The.
So we're pretty sure.
I did that one.
Oh.
That survey, like I said, Jeff just wanted to review those one more time before we decided which one we were going to use. That, again, PO will go out, we have the money budgeted, it is good to go, all we have to do is do that. The, um, crack ceiling. I know I say it to where it sounds horrible. Um, July, they are going to, they've put us on their schedule for July, I don't have the exact date. I will make sure it gets posted on the Facebook page that just kind of warns people to be careful, stay out of their way, that type of thing. Um, so that is one of the other things that's going on.
Pet holes will be first.
Yes, so if you still see other ones, then at that point, we'll probably see, yeah, we will send, um, our maintenance team out there and do that. Our maintenance team right now is going to be doing some painting of the fences that have not been done since I might put them in. So that is one of the large projects that we are trying to do before people start. We are not painting the natural ones, we are only retouching up the ones that we currently have done. Um, the, the, just so everybody is aware of this, and I know we're on public records, so I'm going to try to lighten it here. Um, the concern that the residents had that was here, because I don't know if you guys have any idea what is going, okay, so everybody's looking at me like I'm crazy. So we had residents start calling because they started clearing out the brush. And so we were under the impression they were cutting down trees and they were probably doing this. We were being told that the building was being placed in the wrong place and all this misinformation. So we basically stopped the contractor from cutting down the brush and doing all of that. We were being told that the building was being placed in the wrong place, and all this misinformation, so we basically stopped the contractor from cutting down the brush and doing all of that, because we're like, oh my god, they're putting it in the wrong place. They were not. Um, on the website, the original drafts were posted, the new ones had not been posted yet. Um, when we had that meeting in March, you guys had all agreed, not me, I asked you guys, that's why I came to you guys in March, for the location. Um, that went out to bid, it got bid, you guys approved it, moved forward. They start, so, once, you know, we started seeing that, you know, the two or three people that were upset, we gave them the designs and everything, and they have started analyzing the designs, this isn't right, this isn't right, well, that's it's not right to them, it's right to us, because this is what we decided. Um, so that's where the discrepancy is, so, we have had one particular resident in here every single day. Um, we've had them calling, they've been calling Mike, I've instructed them that they cannot call Mike, they have to come in here, or if they want to come in here and they have questions, Barb will take the information and we will reach out to Mike if I don't know the answer, because I don't know the answer to everything, I mean, just like you guys probably don't, so that's what the, so, um, you know, I had told them that, you know, if, if people can stick around at the end, I knew this was going to be a long meeting, I never promised anything, and I also said that next week they could come in and discuss it, but trees are going to be getting cut down, this is a twenty-seven hundred square foot, it is being pushed back behind those houses, and that was based on the information that you guys had said, and we knew it was costing more money to push it back. That was the whole conversation on March twenty-fourth, so, all I can say is, I have, I, I don't... Yeah, so...
So, there's this elevated concern that people are doing things they're not supposed to do?
But there's a lot of...
Talk about it?
But the designs are what, what has been done and bid on and approved, and you guys have approved, and the, the contract is, like, they were, they're...
Based upon the input, that's...
Yes.
What you're saying is there's some residents are interfering with...
So, at this point, they have been instructed to put a fencing up and all of that, and we will be making sure the residents stay out of the work zone. So, I, I do know that, I believe that one of the concerns is they would like to see the driveway moved over, there is going to be an additional cost if we do that. Um, we did not move the driveway over, in the original plan, the driveway was moved over, but in the original plan, the whole building was moved over, and that's what you guys decided you guys did not want to do in the conversation that was done on March twenty. March twenty-eighth, if anybody wants to go back and read a little bit, yeah.
Right, I think the whole point was that it would be a lot more aesthetically pleasing to the street and everybody else, so they didn't look like, oh, it's a beautiful residential area, oh, there's this trailer issue.
Yeah, and I know that there's, I know that cutting some of the trees down, people are disappointed, and that leads me to the other thing I was going to tell you. We do have less rents again, they are being removed. Um, I know that people are disappointed in that and trying to hide the fact that they're over there, and people are trying to be quiet that they're not over there, or that they are over there. They do eat the cords and things like that to our, we spent almost fifty thousand dollars for fountains, if you guys are not aware, um, between the electric and the fountains and all of that, so they do need to be removed, they are being removed, I, I, I don't really have a choice. And that is based on our people that do our lakes, um, Aquadoc has recommended that we remove them. And they, just like they did the last time, so, just letting you guys know that that's something else that is being done. Um, and at this point, it's nine thirty-five, I, I probably have fifty more things, and we will just go over it next week.
Can I just be a part two, or can we...
Yes, I said part two, I'm, I'm with you, I'm done, I, I, we've been here since six thirty, six o'clock.
Six. And when you say that, um, you, you said, maybe I misunderstood you, that the residents could come and discuss things next week?
No, they can just talk during citizen comments, that's what I mean, oh yeah, no, citizen comments.
Four... Sorry, I'm a little...
Oh, I mean...
I mean, we're here, go for it.
Okay, um, we had to remove all the discounting stuff from the pool. We really, we, because we have to pass it as a, a council, so if we're going to have anything and not have to do three readings, we're going to have to put, we're going to have to read it Thursday and pass it as an emergency, we don't want it, so that we can help with the discount for the pool.
So, if you guys want to do that, or if you want to do it, can you just send me an email, so we can put together legislation, and I can get ready to go for Thursday?
Yeah, we just need to repeat whatever we did last year in the legislation process.
I'm sleeping.
And not to be dumb, I'm not trying to be dumb, you do know how to go on the website, pick old legislation and find it through it.
I'm the first pastor, President, yeah, I do, and I wasn't camera, whatever. I don't want to talk about it.
Tomorrow?
We're all...
Cameraman.
Okay, I was like, do you want pool discounts? That's what I was thinking, is like, do you really want it, do you need a pool, it's like complicates things beyond...
Yes.
But it's the other thing, because this is also your chance to decide, do you just want to do employee discounts, do you want to do it, but then I won't be employed, like, if you guys just want discounts and we don't want to do...
But I think they were, I think everything got removed, but the border and the heart, I don't...
Everything's got, you get a discount off for buying a combo, kind of, I don't know. And so they're not discounting now?
Nothing is, it was, we didn't have to do legislation, because legislation was based on like a...
It's hard to, it's hard to, and then it's something that...
I can take it with me.
For sure. Um...
JP's done.
I, I know, that's not the case, now I'm just saying.
Motion to, just move.
I...
I'm sorry.
Okay, yes, we're good.
Motion to drive?
Yeah, on February.
Alright.